The Pine Bluff City Council Meeting, May the 19th, 2014 is hereby called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett.
Here.
Alderman Easterly.
Here.
Alderman Stepp.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Present.
Yes.
Alderman Brand.
Here.
Alderman Page.
Here.
Alderman Hope.
Thank you. Each of you have a copy of the minutes from May the 5th.
Second.
Okay. The minutes from May the 5th, we have a motion and second that they be approved as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then you...
Second.
All right. Each of you has been a mo... A motion has been made and seconded that the minutes from May the 12th, special called meeting be approved. Any discussion? Special called meeting? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to the committee reports, ways and means. Alderman Brummett.
Mayor, I move that the bills that the city owes be paid.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the bills for the city of Pine Bluff be paid. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That concludes our report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ordinances and resolutions. Alderman Brummett.
Yes, Mayor. The ordinance resolutions committee met prior to the meeting. Item one will be read for the second reading. Items two, three, and four, we return, and five will be read for the first reading. Six through nine are resolutions, and they will be completed.
Alderman Brummett, I would like for number two to be read.
When it comes up for a vote, you know, just make a motion to read it a second time and so on. There are some changes that were handed out for... Number three. I hope everybody's got those changes. And that concludes our report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Economic and Community Development. Alderman Walker.
No report.
Thank you. Public Health and Welfare. Alderman Hope.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public Works. Alderman Mays.
Mayor, thank you. We have a public works meeting Thursday, the 18th of December. It's coming Thursday at 11:30 downstairs here.
What time was that?
11:30.
That's Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay.
And if I could, I would like to ask the citizens if they would, maybe watch groups of work together. I got some calls this morning, people still in ACs, air conditioners already. So, they cutting the whole units out now. Trying to go and look out for that.
Alderman Mays, what is the purpose of this meeting on Thursday? What are we gonna discuss?
Mr. Mays, we have a couple of issues.
Okay. That's fine. I just wondered.
Okay. That concludes your report, sir. Okay. Thank you. Development and Planning. Alderman Boyd.
Uh, no report, Mac, except we have an amendment on the state when we get there.
Okay.
That's it, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, sir. Traffic and Aviation. Alderman Brown.
No official report. However, I am keeping abreast of the things that we're doing to improve our situation. I noticed that we, uh, we did have our celebration on Main Street even though that was a building down there that was torn down, that was, that should be, uh, more or less hauled away or something. I think somebody said something about some kind of bad something that's in the building, but all I know that in Hot Springs, Arkansas, when that building come down, they cleared it away. They think about what they're gonna put in that spot next. So, I think that we need to pay a lot of more attention to the regular buildings downtown versus a lot of other things that we're doing. I think that, uh, we had our celebration and we didn't change the way Pine Bluff looked. We have a decrease in population and we're not, we haven't done anything to, to, uh, change that. We are, we are lacking in jobs, and we're not doing anything to change that. I'm just trying to figure out, actually, we're lacking in competitive jobs, but there are some jobs here. We just lacking in those jobs that help people live and be able to cope and have recreation and, and not stress. We also have a high crime rate. I mean, I think we're curtailing some of the things, but I think we still have a high crime rate here. I just think until we decide that we're gonna stop trying to control each other and situations, we're gonna stay in the same shape we're in. I, I think that we seriously need to do something to stop the population loss if we continue to do what we're doing and allow people to leave our city. It's, it's a serious thought because the money that we pay, the city employees are not gonna be able to make those budgets if we keep losing the tax base. We have to put some consideration to a lost of population every month, every six months, every year, it's another thousand people, it's another two thousand people. It appears to me that people in this town just wanna retire and move to another town. They don't care about whether it's existence. I just think that we need to start considering that. Uh, my, all of my decisions is for the love of Pine Bluff. It's not for, it's not for Glenn Brown, it's not for my fellow Aldermans. My, my decisions are for the love of Pine Bluff and Jefferson County and for you. So, I think we, I think we need to start to think about ways to help Pine Bluff to grow. Now only, and the thing that bothers me the most is we have a man that owned the mall, and he's, he told us something. He was just happy that he was gonna be able to get a TJ Maxx or a Ross store. Those are cheap stores, and he still haven't gotten here. That's something that maybe our alliance or our Chamber of Commerce is not pitching in and helping him out. I don't know who needs to pitch in, but we need our mall. And he's not trying to get any of Marcus or Macy's. He's just trying to get stores that we, we average, middle, low-class people can go and shop for. And it's just a shame that Pine Bluff has, has, has gotten that part, has gotten that low. And, uh, I don't, I don't, I just think there are things that we need to do about it. But there was one more thing I wanted to say before, and I should've done this, and if that lady's listening, she gonna be happy that I thought of it this time. They're having tornadoes in various places in, in, uh, in the state, in the country, basically. And she wanting to know where is our shelter? Where do we go in the time of a storm? And I said, this building here is one, but they don't know about the availability of this building. So, I would like for somebody to get this information out to our, our, our people that live here because they're worried about where would they go? Where could they be if it's a tornado warning or some of that nature? A lot of them don't know. And this particular lady said that to me, and I didn't tell her the truth, but I should've done this last meeting, and I didn't do it. So, if she can forgive me this time, I am telling you, I'm asking about, uh, some ways that we can get the message in where they can go in time of a tornado or some kind of distress. Thank you.
Okay. Administration. Alderman Stips.
No report, Mayor.
Pardon me?
No report.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety. Alderman Easterly.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions.
Yes, Mayor. We have an ordinance approach approving a contract with opinion research of Little Rock, Arkansas for research and data compiling regarding attitudes of residents as in the region to assist in the promotion, Pine Bluff image campaign, waiving competitive selection and related purposes up for the second reading.
An ordinance approving a contract with opinion research of Little Rock, Arkansas for research and data compi... compiling regarding attitudes of residents in the region to assist the promotion, the promotion Pine Bluff image campaign waiving competitive selection and related purposes.
Place it on the calendar. We have an ordinance amending chapter 13 to add a classification residential housing rentals and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Whereas it is declared to amend chapter 13 of the code to add a classification of residential housing rental with respect to property owners renting or leasing property to third parties for occupancy. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one. Section 1389 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas is amended to add a new classification, 860 residential ha... residential housing rental. The schedule and rate for this occupation shall be as follows. One to three houses exempt, four to ten houses, four to ten units, eight dollars per unit, eleven or more units, a hundred and sixty dollars plus nine dollars and sixty cent per unit for each unit, eleven and over. Section two, all ordinances or any parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are suspended to the extent of the conflict. Section three, the ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk shall cause it to be published in accordance with Arkansas law.
I make, uh, well, first of all, the, the people that is involved, Jaimon, with the Inspection Department, they met with Assistant City Attorney, Joe Childress, and, and me as well, and everybody, uh, is of this consensus that it's a good ordinance that everybody can, you know, move on and start building up this city. And so, let me make a motion that we suspend, or we'll just read it three times, please.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that the rules be suspended regarding the ordinance amending chapter 13 to add a classification residential housing rentals and for related purposes. Any discussion? May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly.
Aye.
Alderman Stepp.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move, further, spin the rules, place ordinance on the third and final reading.
You want me to read the title, Mr. Brummett?
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't read it.
Excuse me.
An ordinance amending chapter 13 to... An ordinance amending chapter 13 to add a classification rental housing, excuse me, residential housing rentals and for others, and for related purposes.
We will move to spin rules, place ordinance on the third and final reading.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded that the ordinance amending chapter 13 to add a classification residential housing rentals and for related purposes. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Boyd. I mean, Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly.
Aye.
Alderman Stepp.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Alderman Hope.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
An ordinance amending chapter 13 to add a classification residential housing rentals and for related purposes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that the ordinance amending chapter 13 to add a classification residential housing rentals and for related purposes. Floor is now open for discussion.
Are any of the Inspection Department here that could...
Uh, Mitzi's here. I don't know if she is familiar with it, but, uh, as I said, Jaimon, he discussed it with, uh, Mr. Childress, and he called me on the phone, and he said, this is something that they could really live with, and it would be good, and we could move forward with it. So, everybody was in an agreement that finally we got something that's workable for everybody. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have an ordinance amending section 26-155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas regarding downtown limited time parking, penalty for exceeding time limit, to add subsection D concerning parking along Baricue Street near and in front of the Jefferson County Courthouse and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Whereas sufficient public parking exists in the Jefferson County Courthouse area to allow removal of any time constraints for parking along Baricue Street from Main to West Pine Street. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one. Section 26155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff is amended to add the following as new subsection D. Notwithstanding subsections A and C of this section or any other provision of this chapter, there shall be no time limit for vehicle parking along Baricue Street from its intersection with Main Street westward to its intersection with Pine Street unless the vehicle is abandoned, junked, or inoperable motor vehicle as defined in section 16-52 of this code, in which case the vehicle may be removed as provided by law. Section two, all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section three, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, it shall be published as prescribed by law.
We'll place it on the calendar. Um, I think this should go to the Traffic Operations Committee. Aren't you chairman of that, Alderman Brown? Could you make sure that maybe they, y'all get, give a recommendation to us on that, please? Thank you. Okay. Number four, an ordinance for protection of the public peace and order amending article three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas and for related purposes.
Whereas the wearing of outer garments so as to purposefully exposed underwear and undergarments communicates no intelligible message, and whereas the wearing of clothing in this manner is a visual affront inflicted upon surrounding persons and their children constitutes poor hygiene detracts from the wearer from his or her surroundings due to the need to concentrate on holding up the pants or outer garment and restricts the wearer's ambulatory ability and ability to respond to hazards. And whereas persons walking the streets with their pants sinking below their butt and showing underwear is a sight disgusting to visitors, discouraging to merchants, distract... distracting to the operators or motor vehicles, and inconsistent with the promotion of a positive city image to lure new residents and retailers. And whereas other cities have acted to discourage and prohibit this conduct. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one. Article three of chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended to add new section 1481, which reads, offensive exposure of undergarments prohibited act, section A prohibited acts. No person shall enter or remain in a restaurant or any place where food is prepared or served while wearing his or her outer garment in a manner intended to display three or more inches of underwear or undergarment. Section two, I mean, number two, no person shall enter or remain in or on a city park, city auditorium, city hall, or city facility while wearing his or her outer garment in a manner intended to display three or more inches of underwear or undergarment. Section three, no person shall enter or remain in a city bus or transit vehicle or any city-owned vehicle while wearing his or her outer garment in a manner intended to display three or more inches of underwear or undergarment. Number four, no person shall enter or remain in a radius of 100 feet of a public or private school, daycare, church, hospital, medical facility, or medical facility while wearing his or her outer garment in a manner intended to display three or more inches of underwear or undergarment. Section, number five, no person shall pump gasoline or handle any flammable substance while wearing his or her outer garment in a manner intended to display three or more inches of underwear or undergarment. Number six, no person shall enter or remain in any street or right-of-way or any sidewalk parallel to a street or right-of-way while wearing his or her outer garment in a manner intended to display three or more inches of underwear or undergarment. B, warning, before any person is cited or arrested for a violation of, of the provisions of this section, the law enforcement officer will first give warning to the individual that the individual is in violation of its provisions and provide reasonable opportunity for the individual to come into compliance. C, penalty, any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this section shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction fined an amount between fifty and $200 exclusive of court costs. Uh, D, exemptions, persons under 10 years of age who have a medical condition or a course of treatment which makes it impossible to comply with provisions of this section are exempt. The inadvertent or unintentional exposure of the undergarment is not in violation of this section. Exposure in the course of theatrical presentations is exempt from this section. Section two, the sections, paragraphs, and sentences of this ordinance are declared severable, and the determination that a particular section, paragraph, or sentence is unlawful will not invalidate the remainder of, remained part thereof, hereof, which shall continue to be in full force and effect. Section three, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk shall cause it to be published as required by law.
We'll place it on the calendar. I suppose this should go to Public Safety for review before its final vote.
Public Health and Welfare.
It should go to one of the committees. Should it go to Public Safety?
Public Health and Welfare, is it?
Public Health and Welfare?
Either one.
Either one or both would be appropriate.
Public Health and Welfare.
Public Health and Welfare. You take that on? Alderman Hope, you take that one on? Okay.
I think it falls under Public Health and Welfare.
That's where it should fall. Okay.
As we're going, you gonna...
Moving on to number five, correct? We have an ordinance amending section 7-47-4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas respecting permit fees.
Whereas it is desired to amend section 7-47-4 of the Code concerning valuation of property for permit fees. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, that section 7-47-4A1 and 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas is amended as follows. A, permit fees. Number one, where the valuation does not exceed $500, no fee shall be required unless an inspection is necessary, in which case there should be a fifteen, $15 fee. Number two, for a valuation over $500 up to and including $50,000, the fee shall be $15 for the first thousand plus $6 for each additional thousand of, of fraction thereof. Section two, any ordinance or part thereof is repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section three, the provisions of this ordinance are declared severable. Section four, this ordinance being of general or permanent nature, the clerk shall ensure it is published as required by law.
Here again, this one needs to go to committee. Which committee you should handle this?
Planning and Development.
Development and Planning. Development and Planning, okay. We'd ask Development and Planning to review this before the next reading. We'll place it on the calendar. We now have a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and our structures as nuisance and ordering their abatement.
Whereas the City Council has determined that the structures located on the property listed in section three of this resolution...
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that a resolution declaring certain houses, building, and our structures as nuisance and ordering their abatement. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have a little amendment here. I think everyone have a copy of, some of them have been taken out due to the contact property on, some of them with some different issues that we had with the committee, uh, that we rescheduled.
Okay.
So, they're all on this list that we've taken out.
Second, second, chairman.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that the, um, amendment with the following houses be removed from the, um, abatement list. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the amendment.
Mayor, I move that we accept the original as amended.
Okay. Second. Okay. The original, um, motion has been moved and seconded that the original, uh, as amended be, um, before the committee, council? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a resolution directing that interim supervisors of the City Collector's Office and the Inspection and Zoning Departments be paid full department head pay for the time in which they act as interim supervisors.
Whereas Mitzi Ruth serves and Sharon Johnson until recently served as interim supervisors for the Department of Inspection and Zoning and the City Collector's Office respectively. And whereas it is, it is the practice of city government to pay interim supervisors the same pay as would be paid the department head for each department for the time period they serve as interim supervisor. And whereas pursuant to this practice, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Ruth should receive the same salary as the department head in each office would receive for interim supervisor service retroactive to the date each was designated interim supervisor or assumed the responsibility as of office or department supervisor. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that Sharon Johnson, for the time period she acted as interim supervisor of the City Collector's Office, and Mitzi Ruth as current interim supervisor of the Department of Inspection and Zoning, should each receive the full salary which would otherwise be paid to the full-time department head for the Inspection and Zoning Department or to the City Collector. Retroactive to the date each was appointed, designated, or assumed the role as head supervisor in the office or department and continued until they are replaced as interim supervisor or appointed permanent off, permanent office or department head. Full, full salary as used in the preceding sentence means the salary paid immediately prior to their separation from employment to the incumbent department head or city collector who Ms. Ruth and Ms. Johnson replaced.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that the resolution directing the interim supervisors of the City Collector's Office and the Inspection and Zoning Departments be paid full department head pay for the time in which they act as interim supervisors. Floor is now open for discussion.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to say that I would like to be a co-sponsor on this also. Anybody else?
Any other discussion?
Oh. John.
You on it?
Yes. I'm on it. I'm on it.
May we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly.
Aye.
Alderman Stepp.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a resolution commending Mike Sizmore for service to the community as a member of the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission.
Whereas Mike Sizmore served this community as a member of the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission, and whereas this service is a hallmark of good citizenship essential to the effective administration of public facilities and worthy of commendation. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that we, the mayor, and the members of the City Council do hereby commend Mike Sizmore for a service to the community as a member of the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission. The mayor, the mayor shall ensure that a duly engrossed prop, copy of the, this resolution is provided to Mr. Sizmore.
Move for adoption.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that a resolution commending Mike Sizmore for the service to the community as a member of the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a resolution appointing Rocky Thornburg to the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission.
Whereas the term of Mike Sizmore as a member of the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission expires May 31st, and whereas the mayor has elected to appoint Rocky Thornburg to succeed Mr. Sizmore, subject to council approval. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Rocky Thornburg to the Pine Bluff Aviation Commission to serve a term commencing June 1st, 2014, and expiring May 31st, 2019 is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption.
It's been properly moved and seconded that a resolution appointing Rocky Thornburg to the Pine Bluff Aviation Commissioner, Commission. Floor is now open for discussion. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I thought we, I thought we were clear on the fact that we were going to allow the City Council to see the, uh, openings on our commissions and that some names be brought before us and our committees before us so that we won't get on the floor and wonder whether that person is acceptable or not. And not taking anything from Mr. Thornburg, but I, I would like for this to be pulled and let it run through traffic and aviation before we vote on it, if it's anywhere possible.
This is a... This is a... It's your resolution.
It's the mayor's. I don't mean to, I believe I...
It's my resolution.
Excuse me. I, I mean, I didn't understand. Make the motion.
It's.
It's the mayor's.
Mm-hmm.
I don't mean to, I believe I.
It's my resolution.
I, I mean, I didn't understand what you said. It's the mayor's resolution, she would have to be the one, she's the sponsor, she'd have to pull it. Well, it, it is my suggestion that we pull it and let it come through the, uh, the traffic and aviation and let it come back. I just think we need to, it's.
But what she's saying is that we can't pull it.
I'm not saying, I'm not telling us to pull it, I'm saying I think it's best.
Okay.
Do that. I'm, I'm not, if, if you call it a motion, that's rescinding of the motion. I'm just suggesting that it should come through traffic and aviation before we vote on it. That's just my rec- that's my recommendation.
Mayor, let me say, uh, something, it, um, I had received a call and I really didn't read it before then, uh, that, uh, this individual has only lived in the city for a year. And he has three years of residency on here, uh, on his application, that he's only lived here for years. And that he also had a, maybe a business that he works out of at the airport, um, prop duster or something of that sort. And, um, you know, I understand that he is a pilot, uh, but I remember before, um, in the appointments, uh, for the Aviation Commission, that they weren't just looking for all pilots. Uh, I think the regu- regulate, regulation said, um, that you should have at least one pilot, uh, on there, but that you, you know, the whole idea was to get other business people as well, uh, to make the airport grow instead of just having a club for pilots.
Okay, this, Mr. Thornburg came, um, recommended by the, um, Doug Hale and many of the airport, uh, commissioners and people out there. So.
If I may speak.
I see his reference.
If I may speak, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hale and I get along fine, I don't know why he didn't bring this to me. Whenever he needs something, he comes to me and we have no problem at all. He did not recommend this to, to me in, in the traffic and aviation. I'm not saying that something was wrong, I'm just saying that I, I, I think it should've been discussed in traffic and aviation, Aviation Commission before, committee before it, it, it got to this, this table.
Okay, okay.
One gentleman said that he had had, he had his name, um, that he had put his name in as, um, a candidate to serve on the commission and he wasn't chosen, but he was assuming that they kept the application until, um, such time as one opened up and then that they would consider the people that had applied before.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Alderman Brummett.
Aye.
Alderman Easterly. Alderman Steppes.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
No.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
No.
Alderman Mays.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We have, um, three announcements before we adjourn tonight and then we have two speakers lined up for public comments. The Black Pilots of America will hold their Operation Skyhook at Grodder Field next weekend, May the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. For more information, please call eight seven zero five three four four one three one. Also, Jefferson County Young Professionals Network presents Can You Kick It? Kickball Tournament on May the thirty-first at Regional Park. And for, for more information, you can call five three five zero one one zero. And third announcement, town hall meetings have been changed to quarterly now and the next town hall meeting will be September the fifteenth. Do we have an emo- a motion for adjournment?
Just before, just before we get that motion. Mayor, I'm gonna try to find the right time to request it. I still have not received a financial statement from the, uh, the fanfare, I mean, the, uh, It's over, I, is, is, am I gonna get it or I'm just, just talking?
Yes, sir. You're going to get it. Matter of fact, we got our last invoice in today. So, we're completing our accounting on it.
I'd like to have it on my pocket, thank you.
You, you will receive that. Motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that Pine Bluff City Council meeting is hereby adjourned.